Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for October 6, 2025, 6:00 PM. This meeting is broadcast and recorded 16. And our lost town manager. And so Brendan, do we, we have a 6:30 appointment? Do we want to go to your?
Sure. So in my report tonight, the first item has to do with the DPW superintendent hiring process. The board did discuss putting together a preliminary screening committee at your last meeting. I did bring that to the superintendent and the chairman of the Board of Public Works. He had some questions to me in between last meeting and this meeting, and my understanding is they're probably going to be talking about my answers to those questions tonight because they're meeting at the same time that you're meeting. So I'm going to recommend, of course, that we talk about it again at the next meeting when you have more input from the Board of Public Works.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Can I just ask, what is the anticipated cycle for advertising, hiring?
It's, we're, we're very close right now to what we would want. It's soon going to be not enough time.
Yeah, okay.
But we have been talking with them all along. I just haven't been getting a clear answer yet.
Good question. And if it's delayed, would we have to go with the, pick somebody as an interim or?
It's something you could do if, if more time is needed to really field the candidates and get a pool that you think is, yeah, you could do that, yes.
Have you, sorry. Have you ever had a situation where, because I, we've had them at work, you've had a bunch, fielded candidates and they just, none of them did it, did the job, and so you went back to, so that's a distinct possibility as well?
It is, that you, you know, you look through everyone and it's not the right fit. And then, again, you could look for an interim and hopefully other people that perhaps were not available at the one time might be available, you know, at another time. Next one is a successor solid waste disposal contract. The town was involved in a three-year contract with Covanta. And that three-year contract runs its course on June 30th of 2026. In anticipation of wanting to continue with the town, the company is now called ReWorld. ReWorld would like to enter into a longer-term contract with the town, five years, at the same terms that the old contract was at. And that involves the CPI, Consumer Price Index W. That's the Urban Wage and Earners and Colonial Workers for the Boston metropolitan area. Prior to that, the first draft of this renewal came in with a different index, which is much more flashy and much more prone to be, come in at a higher rate. So I was able to convince them to continue with the basic CPIW, which tends to be muted by all of the sectors, not just the waste disposal sector, or the water and sewer sector. So it's my recommendation that the board agree, and the, and the Board of Public Works has already seen this and they're on, they're on board with it, that the board approve this five-year extension with ReWorld, subject to appropriation by the town meeting in May.
Did Covanta, were they purchased by ReWorld?
Yes. It's the same people, yep.
So do you want me to entertain a motion or just use that as the motion?
You can, somebody can say so moved unless.
A second, but I want to talk about it.
Okay.
So five-year, was it a three-year contract?
Yes. We have a five-year contract for the hauling. So Commonwealth Waste hauls the stuff from Essex to ReWorld, and that was originally a five-year contract. We wanted actually a five-year contract to match with Covanta, and at the time they weren't interested in it. They are now. There's very limited options here anyway, because there's only a couple of big waste-to-energy plants. One of them's in Saugus and one of them's in Avril.
So, I mean, I guess I'm going to ask some questions about it. So there, you don't feel like there's any value to putting this out to bid for anybody else?
I don't think there is, no.
Okay. And if, I'm just thinking about the uncertainty right now. Is it better to lock into a five-year contract, given the uncertainty?
With a, with a CPI escalator, I don't see, I mean, that's standard. That's what you're gonna, that's what you're gonna find, no matter which company you're gonna use.
And you two have been around for a while. What do you think?
I think it makes sense. I mean, there's three and a half years left on the hauling contract?
Probably less than that now. Two, it'll be two years. When this, when this one expires, there'll be two years left on the hauling contract.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm going to guess that they didn't do a five-year before because they knew something was in the wind.
Perhaps.
So, yes.
You know, we, prior to this, we've been with them for decades. Prior to that, it was another company. Prior to that, it was another company. It's the same place that burns the trash.
Okay, so can you, sorry to ask this, can you tell me the difference between this and what you just talked about hauling? What is the difference?
Yep. So at one point in time, Covanta actually provided the disposal at the waste-to-energy plant, but they also hauled the trash from Essex to their own plant.
Yep.
When the contract expired two and a half years ago, they said, we are no longer going to be in the hauling business. You have to find your own hauler. And so at that point, we entered into a five-year agreement with Commonwealth to do the hauling, three years with Covanta, now ReWorld to do the disposal, and we entered into a three-year contract with Waste Zero. Those are the people that create, produce the bags, the yellow trash bags. And so there, we separated that and Commonwealth was actually, believe it or not, the company that was hauling for Covanta. What we did is we said, well, will you contract directly with us? And they said, yes.
Okay. And the recycled goes to ReWorld?
No, the recycling goes to, I believe, ReWorld just burns trash. Recycling goes to a variety of places, but that's a different hauler, and it goes to wherever they bring it. I, that's not on the table right now, anyway.
Yeah, okay. I just kind of wanted to know, like, all of the different places.
So can I just ask one last question? Is that, does this include the personnel that we have at the compactor? Like, was that with Covanta? Or was that?
No, that's with Commonwealth. So that's already in place, and that has a couple, two and a half years left on it.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure.
It used to be that Covanta provided the personnel, but they don't anymore.
That ended three years ago.
Right.
So the gentleman who's up at the, at the structure is the person who is a Commonwealth employee?
Works for Commonwealth, correct.
And there's no other employees there that are Commonwealth employees?
No, we have town employees and one Commonwealth employee.
Thank you.
Correct.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you.
Now I have an update on the Memorial Park tennis courts. Put that over here. So Weston and Sampson has continued to work on the design for renovation of the tennis courts. And in their design process, they were working to minimize the extent to which the town has to dig into the subsurface because there may be railroad contaminated waste in that area. So some of the things that they're looking at are reflective of that. One of them is that they are looking at a post-tension concrete slab for each court. So there'd be two independent slabs. That would allow them to construct that without as much digging into the ground. No matter how they're going to do the finish on the court, whether that was asphalt or concrete, they need to elevate the area from between six inches and two feet. Another thing that.
Why is that? Because it slopes?
Yeah, it's very low on one end. Another thing that they're looking at is, in order to not go deep into the ground with the posts for the fence, this design that you have in front of you incorporates a galvanized receiver tube that has, that's spread out under, or I think cast in place in the slab, so that the post can just go in that tube, and the slab is, is creating the resistance to hold that post up. Those are, between the post tension and the, and the receiver tubes, that's driving the cost up. Other elements that are driving the cost up, they've indicated that the paved drive that is going next to the courts right now needs to be moved over, and in the process, if they're going to move it, they would like it to come back as gravel. The reason they have to move it is because the courts need a little extra width compared to what is there for the design that you see, and they can't go toward the wetland. They have to go toward the ball field.
So would that make that road smaller?
No, they just, there's enough room, they think, to move the road over and maintain an 18-foot width road.
Brendan, is it possible that it won't trigger anything if they do borings to see what's beneath, so that they don't have to manipulate?
Well, we decided, we decided not to do that at the outset, because if they did hit anything in a boring, then we'd have to, that, that starts, it triggers something. And if it triggers that outside of a time when the town is ready to actually do construction and has, has an appropriation to do that, you would have to come up with money to deal with the contamination. So we decided not to do that. They're talking about taking the mature plantings out, the bushes that are between the playground and the tennis courts, and putting smaller plantings back in.
That's my biggest issue. Forget the dollar amount, but that's my biggest issue. Because I've had parents say to me that it's very hot there, and so they can't stay. And I was thinking, eventually looking at what we can do to help even with that heat. So if you take those trees out, it's really going to be hot there.
But those are, are those, those are providing?
They are providing, yeah. They could be cut, trimmed.
Yeah, they, they go up, right? They don't, so they're not giving you shade anyway, right? They're just.
Not a lot.
Would you just go?
Well, it depends on the season and how high the sun is.
Sometimes what they're doing today is they're putting up like a shade, like a sail thing.
So that's what I was, I was actually even having, gonna talk to somebody, so.
Yeah.
They're also working on ADA access pass in parking spaces, new wetland plants as restoration for the disturbance. And the pitch, when, when it gets renovated, can no longer be toward the wetland. That's what it is now. It would pitch towards the ball field. That water would get intercepted in a drain and then spilled out over some rocks.
There's no drain there now. It'd have to have a drain built.
Right. That's right. That's another.
Because the ballpark gets flooded.
But it's going to be a surface drain, right? It's going to drain along underneath the court and come out on the surface.
Or to, on one edge of the court, it's going to end up coming off, intercepted by a drain, and then it's going to spill out over some rocks before it gets to the wetland. But it can't pitch to the wetland. And so you can talk all about the features you want to see or not see as time, time goes on. The engineering firm wants to go to the Conservation Commission on the 28th, which I think is fine, because I think what we have in this design represents the maximum level of disturbance that you could anticipate.
Oh, I see, okay.
And if you get it permitted for that, and then you make a change that makes it less impactful, then you're going to get your approval anyway when it comes time to construct. And there'll be three years.
Well, is this still pretty much required?
Not the post-tension concrete.
Okay, yeah, but what else are you going to do?
You would have to still elevate the court, but then put a layer of, of asphalt. The problem with that is if there's any movement, it could crack, and the post-tension concrete tends to be, have more longevity.
Probably it's not going to save you all that much money.
If you look at the estimate for just the, the court, I think it says there 593, the court with the fences.
It's like in the middle.
Yep. Very small. But with everything else, you know, like if, if you drop the post tension, that price is going to go down. If you switch to fence posts that are just going to be augured into the ground, price is going to go down. But that's not, like I said, that's not something you need to worry about right now. I think the board should take some time to digest this, maybe come up with your own questions. We can have the engineer come back in and address what your options are.
And, and again, my, my concern is the price.
Yep.
From $150,000 to 1.1 million.
Little over a million, yep.
I did fall off my chair when I read that. So I, I'm fine with them going to the ConCom, but.
And that'll be good for three years. So that's, that's a part of it I think should go forward, but ultimately, the board needs to decide after you have more information about if you want to see other options, you know, what will, what would the change in price be if you went from one thing to the next? And what are the relative risks? I think the engineer should come in and say, well, if you go to this, the risk is this. If you move to this thing, then the risk is that.
And, and in a pristine area, they were putting in a tennis court, what kind of range are you looking at? We know that this is higher because of where it's located.
Well, you got elevated, so that's, you're bringing in fill, compacting fill, you know, that's a whole extra step. If you just went to a place that the grade was already where you wanted it to be, then they would just level it, level the area, put in a subgrade and put, put asphalt in as the base.
This wasn't supposed to be a town project, you know, it's supposed to be, I mean, the town donated funding to do this.
Yes.
The group what they did, and that's where we're supposed to go. You know, a million bucks is a lot for two tennis courts. So I think it's maybe up to the proponents and the, I get, I don't know if it's a nonprofit or not, whatever it is, the group that wants the tennis courts, if this is something that they find feasible for them to fundraise for.
Or at least come back with other viewpoints on whether this is really needed, that is really needed. Like I said, when the, when the engineer comes in, I think everyone can talk together about their concerns and whether or not there's a risk associated with choosing one thing over another. I, I plan to share this with these folks after tonight's meeting, so they can start to digest it as well. But really, nothing's going to happen outside of the Conservation Commission meeting this fall. It's, you know, we want to give guidance by the end of the project to our engineers as to whether you're going to select any other options, scale anything back, change any of the choices that have been made. But at least this gives you the, kind of the limit of, of where it will go, based on, on municipal bid and so forth.
Can I just respond to that remark about this not being a town project? It's on town land, it's for the benefit of the town, the townspeople. So we can change our minds. We can make a decision in one year and make another decision in another year. It's really up to the voters, right?
Right.
So.
But where would the money come from?
Pardon?
Where would the money come from?
Voters. We, we have money that is set aside in the, in that list.
Community preservation.
Community preservation, and you've also got 119 in there for some sort of recreational something. These are taxpayer dollars. Taxpayers can decide what they want to do, but people who are proponents have to make the case as well. So let them, let them see this. I mean, this is brutal.
That's what I'm saying. Let them decide.
Yeah, and advocate.
So is there any chance that the engineers could highlight things that could possibly be looked at at reducing?
Oh, there's, yeah, generally.
Like, I don't know. I look at them and go.
It's going to be the fence posts and the post-tension concrete slabs.
And that, because that's the biggest.
That's it. They still have to do ADA, they still have to do a drain, they still have to elevate the area.
And, and have they looked at, sorry, I have to put a flashlight on so I can read this. Have they looked at, what does that mean for the ballpark? Is that going to cause more water not to be able to run off?
No, because it's going to be intercepted and then.
Okay.
Turned back towards.
Even with that, it's only, even the tennis court, where's the one with the, is it the 80? Let's see, I can't read this.
The sidewalk thing?
Oh, no.
Having curbing?
Never mind, it's five something. Okay, never mind, that's better. All right.
You know, moving the road, right? Moving the road is another cost, which they're telling me is going to need to be done, no matter what surface that you choose, no matter what type of fencing you choose, fence posts you choose. The, the road has to be taken out and moved over and put back in gravel.
This is not necessarily Weston and Sampson that would be doing this project. You would put this out to bid.
Yeah, they're not, they're not a construction company.
Right, so you can have, you can have the guy who does the dredging come and do it.
Yeah, come on, Will.
So, you know, the point.
Come back for two years.
Yeah, right.
The point of tonight is just to check in for the board. This is what they came up with. This includes all of the, you know, probably most difficult or most expensive things. Take a look at it, we'll share it with the group that's looking at this project, and eventually we will, after, after the Conservation Commission meeting, which I'm going to attend, that's on the 28th, we can bring it up again as to whether revisions should be made, because this is only a preliminary cost estimate, and they do owe us a final cost estimate. And I'm sure they're, they'll be able to keep this information on there, and then show, show you other numbers if they took this out or they took that out, or a combination of these, of these factors. So again, by, by no means is this a final thing. It's just to show you some of the things they've been thinking about and what's shaping up so far. Are there any other questions on that?
Just, just to make a point, this is like over 50% higher than we expected.
Yep. The next item I have is our insurer, the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association, otherwise known as MIA. They provide our health insurance benefits for both active and retired employees, and they provide our dental and vision. They're now starting to offer supplemental group insurance benefits, things like short-term disability, and a whole list of, of things that could be, could be offered. I did attend a webinar with respect to these offerings, and we're told that there's going to be an account executive coming out within a month, I think, to talk about it more. So I want to bring it back to the board, but I wanted to just get your initial take on whether it's something you're interested in. These would be 100% employee-funded. We're not talking about a town contribution here. Whether or not we would have to bargain it with the unions is an open question, and whether or not we would have to go out to competitively procure these services by looking at other options is also an open question.
And that's open for you, looking into the laws or what? I mean, because there's no downside, this is.
Well, the downside might be, once it's a benefit, there could be an argument made, well, the, the employees should have, should start paying less for it, and the town should start picking up some elements of it.
So it's either they don't receive these opportunities, which is group life insurance, long-term.
Possibility, yep.
We keep it the way it is where they don't get it, or they have the ability to have long-term disability.
Right, but I'm, self-funded to start, but I'm saying, over time, it might become, it might become, right, an item on the table, yeah.
Which the next contract is what, three years out?
Is going to be.
28.
Two and a half years out. You know, so at this point in time, give it some thought. I'm going to bring it back up after I've had a chance to meet with the account, account executive, and I have more information about collective bargaining and procurement, and then go from there. But I wanted to put the concept on the table.
And with us being so small, is the, I mean, they're still offering it, is it because it's with MIA that it's?
Yes, because we're benefiting from the big, large pool of communities that participate.
Do we know what an individual would pay to cover the supplemental benefits?
I do not have any rates yet. That's what the account executive is going to come out and talk about.
Okay.
So can I ask some questions about, would this be, would be offered to all employees?
All employees, yes.
Have to be offered the same? And I'm just thinking about.
Anyone working 20 hours or more.
Yep. And then the administration of this, right? So we don't have an HR department, you're the HR department.
Yeah, well, I'm, many aspects of it, but when it comes to benefits, it's actually the treasurer. So Brooke already handles the health insurance, the vision and the dental.
I, I guess I'm asking, is it fair to, if, if you decide to do this, to go, to add this additional burden on her? Just throwing it out there.
Well, one of the things that they talked about is that I believe they're bringing on a company that would help run it.
And I think it's an online.
Yeah, so that that burden might not amount to much. But again, I'm going to ask a lot of questions when, when the person does come to talk about it.
Can I ask one more question? Can you ask them, right now, if you wanted to get any of these sorts of, this sort of coverage, you can get it on, can you get it on the open market?
Yeah, there's a company called Affleck that is very experienced.
What is it?
I know that ad. So that's the, and they call all the time, but generally speaking, we've, you know, not offered these benefits.
Okay.
But yeah, you could get it. I think what we're going to be told is the, the group pool is going to be able to bring it in for the employees at a better price, even though it's 100% employee-funded.
Thank you.
Yep. So I'll bring that back at the appropriate time. So do we have enough time for?
I would say no, but do you want to just do your last piece, which is the port security? The good news? Let's end on good news.
Okay, so at this point in time, the town did receive word that the town will be able to get a new harbor master boat under the port security grant. We have 60 days to either accept or not accept the grant. I spoke with the harbor master today, and he said that he wants to look at the features that are in the, on the boat that was applied for, because they may want to add something called a davit. And a davit is like a hoisting device, and it's because they're thinking of changing over how they anchor the moor, the, not the moorings, the marker buoys in the channel. Right now, they're, they, they have a chain on them, but it's a very long chain, which makes them go all over the place. They want to do a shorter chain, but with a shorter chain, they lose weight, and so they, they're going to put a bigger anchor. With a bigger anchor, when they have to take them out at the end of the year, they need something to do it. So they're thinking ahead on this. And my understanding is that's another $3,500, and he thinks that he can stay within the federal, what the federal government says we have to have, but tweak some of the other features on the boat so that the davit is a wash.
Yeah, so get rid of some things.
Right. So what he requested, since we do have 60 days, is that we bring it back to you at the next meeting. He will be here for the, for the department head's discussion, and he plans to speak a lot more about this grant and what his, what his recommendation is to.
But is the 60 days up after town meeting? Because that's when we'll know.
Right. The 60 days is up from, let's see.
Is it October 2nd or 3rd that you got?
We got this thing.
Yeah, it's 30 days.
28th.
Yeah, so it was, it was September 28th, so that's going to be November 20, it'll be after.
Is this something that could be retrofitted afterwards?
It could be, but it's not, if you're building a boat, because that's what they'd be doing, it'd be much better to put the foundational elements in when they're building the boat than it would be to try to bolt it down or whatever it's going to be later, is what I was told today. But you can talk directly to the harbor master about it. There's no reason that we have, that you have to accept it tonight unless you want to do that.
I'm sure the port authority grant has all kinds of bells and whistles that aren't necessary.
Some of them, they want you to have, even though we wouldn't want to have them, and some of them are probably optional.
Yeah.
And I think he's going, in the next two weeks, he's going to come and try to tease out what, will he let us not get that we don't want anyway?
Certain things.
And trade out the cost. But he doesn't have that information tonight. But he doesn't have that information tonight.
So they dictate the entire amount that you spend, even if some of that is town dollars?
They dictate the type of boat and the features that it has to have. And when they applied for the grant, they looked at several different manufacturers that had a boat that met those specifications.
Yep.
And they happened to pick out a, a brand called Steel Shark. And that was fine, because they were able to pick something that the manufacturer had everything listed, it would meet the grant. But that doesn't mean that everything on that features list is a requirement of the federal government. He thinks he's gonna be able to swap it out.
Okay, great. And then the amount we're asking for a town meeting is not to exceed-
Not to exceed 95,000.
So if we don't use it, it goes back in the till?
That's right.
Okay.
And congrats on that grant, that's-
Yeah, huge.
Good news.
That's great, that was great news.
And give kudos to, um-
Valerie.
Valerie, thank you. Couldn't remember her name. All right, it is now 6:32. Chris? Would you like to come up and- Um, Chris, if you could just make sure you talk into the mic, and if you could write your name on the, on the sheet.
Sure, would you, I have handouts, do you like them?
If you have handouts, we'll take them.
How are you?
What was going on earlier today? Maybe you didn't?
Good evening, no, it's okay. Uh, good evening, my name is Chris Bevelacqua, I am the Executive Director at the Ipswich Family YMCA. And I am here tonight just to give the, the select board an update on the activities associated with Centennial Grove, and the contract that we have with the town to run camp programming as well as enrichment programs, and also just give a little bit more background on some of the other program we've been doing in collaboration across the community with the school district and, and other agencies. So, thank you so much for taking the time to listen to me, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. The, if you flip to the first page of the handout, I guess, everything kind of here for us starts with Camp Dory, which is the camp program at Centennial Grove. We have, in partnership with the Town of Essex, we just wrapped up our 12th summer there, delivering camp programming at a discounted fee for residents of Essex. Uh, over at that property, it's been a great, uh, a great run for us, we've really enjoyed running the program. Uh, that started before my tenure here, and has continued on through my tenure up to this point. We have a few years left on the extended contract. And it's, like I said, it's gone really well, and we've really enjoyed serving the town. Just a couple of pieces of information, the summer of 2025, we provided safe and engaging camp experience, we had about 375 kids participate. Um, of those participants, 31% were Essex residents. Uh, about 25% of them received financial assistance from us to attend. So, just some background for you, kids that attend our camp, they are eligible for financial assistance as well, we don't turn anyone away, so based on income eligibility, we will work to provide scholarships through a variety of different resources. We fundraise on our own to do that, as well as we have an endowed scholarship program that we have raised funds for, that we can also pull funds for. So, um, that's, that's been the access point for a lot of people. Uh, we had an 80% retention rate of Essex families year over year from 24 to 25, which was really nice to see. A lot of families coming back. Um, since 2015, we've invested over $50,000 in facility and property improvements. I'm gonna see that more, a little bit more about that on the next page. We've, in, uh, due to increase, a couple of challenges we've seen, and due to increasing frequency and duration of Tobacco Lake closures, there's been some stinobacteria blooms over the past couple summers. This particular summer was pretty challenging, um, with an increased number of them. We've started to see some feedback from parents about the quality and, and really thinking about how we work to improve that, so we pivoted pretty quickly. Purchased a big inflatable water slide, um, got a bunch of water features. The town is great, the fire department came down, helped out with the hose. Um, we were able to, to use some of the, the water feature, the, or the water sources out on the ball field as well. But we're really thinking ahead to next year and what that's gonna look like. We're not sure if this is the type of thing that's gonna continue. We've talked to folks at the Watershed Association to get their feedback and their thoughts. Um, we've talked with Erin at Board of Health. And with the unpredictability around it, we've been talking about what options we could provide, so one of the things that, that popped up, and just kind of gonna put it out there for your consideration, and love to talk a little bit more about it at some point, is the Y installing a above-ground pool on the property for the summer. You know, that would follow all the safety guidelines and everything that needed to be done, we would obviously manage it. But the idea being that when there is a late closure during those hot days, because those stinobacteria blooms and those closures seem to coincide with these, these long heat waves that, that have been hitting, we'll have a body of water available for the kids, um, and be able to maintain that quality at the camp. So, just something that, that we've talked about, and we're, we're kind of prepared to propose, if, if it's something that the, the select board would like to look at down the road. But also interested to hear from you all, if you have any ideas or any thoughts on, on how to address that issue moving forward in, in terms of access to the water, because it's, it is the key feature, right, to that camp. It's kind of what draws people there, so when we lose it, it, it makes it kind of tough. And it's really, you know, it's, it's tough for the kiddos. And then lastly, since 2015, we've engaged over 50 volunteers in camp beautification projects at Centennial Grove, so we've worked with local businesses. Uh, there are donors of ours to bring down volunteer groups, we've painted facilities, um, we've worked on the grounds, we have repaired facilities, so, uh, continue to do that as we move forward. It's, it's, it's been great to, to make that impact on the property and kind of share that with the greater community.
I'm sorry, Chris.
Go ahead.
On one page it says 50, and on another page it says 60.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's 60, that's, that's a typo, so it's over 60. So if you look at, at that second one, so you'll see some of the improvements we've made. We've done roof replacements on the Arts and Crafts building, which is that red building as you come up, as well as the cottage down the grove, uh, or down the road there. Um, we've constructed a changing barn, there was one in existence, we constructed a second one. Um, we've done repairs on the exterior stairs, deck, and doors on the cottage. Um, those are rotting out, and, so every year when we get our inspection, uh, done by the building inspector, those are a couple things that came up that we had to address. Painting and repair of the old pavilion, so before the, the new pavilion went up, when the old one wasn't in place, we did a lot of work to kind of keep that up and keep it up to code. Again, like I talked about, we had to purchase some water features for camp this summer, it was a couple of grand. We installed the Low Ropes Challenge Course to enhance the, um, to enhance the camp properties, so that's down the, the trail towards the cottage. If you go to the right in the woods there, it's a set-up takedown. So, they set it up during the day for the kids, and then they take it down in the evening. We installed the Gaga Pit, um, again, just to add activities, and then, um, program tents, when the, when the pavilion went down, we need to ensure that we add some shade for those kids. So we purchased a number of, of big tents that, that could serve as those shade stations. The next one is just some camp, some camp parent feedback, so just some quotes. Um, this is actually from our, our last summer, um, some of the parents that attended Dory, so you can read through some of that. I think that last quote's probably my favorite. Um, it kind of speaks to, uh, the character of, of the staff that we're hiring and the impact they're having with the kids. The changes that they, that they make in, in the lives of those that attend, but then also, you know, the, the character that they build in the kids while they're there. The next page is just additional Essex programming in partnerships over the years. So, just to give some context to this one, we currently, uh, membership at our Y for Essex residents is just under 1,000. So just under 1,000 of our members are Essex residents. Market penetration rate of about 26% for the community. Uh, our highest use is from ages 30 to 49. We have about 222 of roughly 827 adults in the community using us. Uh, this is all market research data that our marketing team has, has collected and, and analyzed for us. And then the second highest number of members is ages 5 to 14, as a lot of people would expect, with about 212 of the 495 in that age group from town using our facilities. So that's everything from sports programs to swim lessons, you name it, um, all the youth program that we offer. So, as part of the contract, we were also asked, the, the renewed contract to run Camp Dory, we were also asked to offer some enrichment programs in town, specifically for residents. Um, these are outlined in the contract that the select board presented to us. So, our first year, we went through, we did some enrichment classes, and you can see they're listed up top. Preferred pricing for Essex residents, to make sure they were affordable and accessible, so we did a CPR certification, babysitting certification, health and nutrition classes, family yoga, youth sports classes. They were, they were pretty well-attended. We would have liked to have seen more people, but I'd say we have an average of like eight, eight or so, eight to 10 people attending each class. Because the enrollment was not as big as we wanted, we did a survey of the community a few months ago. Shared it with Brendan, he, he got it out to folks. We shared it with all of them, our members who are current Essex residents, and it basically kind of tried to get a handle of all the things that were, or of all the things that were listed in the contract, what are the ones the community really wants to see and offering moving forward. From that feedback, we created the current fall list of, of offerings. So that's one of the things we have going. Um, we do after-school care at Essex Elementary School, we've been doing that for about six or seven years now. Uh, actually, probably, yeah, yeah, six or seven years now. Summer literacy support, that's another one that's been going for about seven years. Just to give you an idea, the after-school program, we have about 30 kids a day there. Summer literacy support, that's a free program, so we work with the schools to identify rising second and third graders that are struggling academically with literacy. And then we provide a four-week program where the morning, they go for free literacy support with teachers that we hire at Manchester Essex Middle School, and then at noon time, we put them on a bus, and we send them to Camp Dory for camp experience for the afternoon. It's entirely free, uh, and funded through a donor. Fundraising events, we've been able to utilize the pavilion, do some fundraising events to build up that camp scholarship pool, to ensure that all kids from Essex can attend camp regardless of ability to pay. We do weekly and annual food assistance programs that support Essex residents, so, um, we do weekly food deliveries in partnership with Open Door Food Pantry, where folks can sign up to have groceries delivered if they're homebound. We have a, a few folks from Essex that are on that list that we deliver to. And then we also do an annual food drive the Saturday before Thanksgiving, where a portion of that food is distributed out to Essex residents as well. And then lastly, we partner with Kate Kraus, who's a member of our board. She runs a fundraiser the month of October called Phil Brenda's Truck. It is a fundraiser in memory of her mother. They do, we collect food at the elementary schools and the library, and then we also raise money through other avenues, through fundraising pages, that type of stuff, to support the camp scholarship programs in Essex. Manchester Essex, we're Manchester and Essex Rotary members, it's been great being a part of that group, and participating in a lot of those programs to support the community. We have a number of Essex residents who participate in our Live Strong and Parkinson's Wellness programs. Those are free programs for folks living with cancer, um, or struggling with Parkinson's, that help address the symptom, or the, the effects of those diseases, and then help them on their path to recovery. We are sponsor of the Happy's a Clam Road Race, uh, we provide free, we provided free family games and activities at Clam Fest. Um, in the past, during COVID, we did learning pods at Essex Elementary School, we had about 60 kids a day. That was for families that were working from home, that could not also have their kids doing school at home, so we provided a space at the elementary schools for, for those families. Uh, we ran elementary and middle school theater programs for the elementary and the middle school kids. Uh, we had Essex kindergarten swim lessons for a while, we don't have those anymore. That was a great partnership that I've been working with Pam Bowden to figure out how we can bring back. And then in the past, we've also had childcare for town elections when requested, so. Again, you can see, it's been a longstanding partnership with the town. We've really enjoyed all of it, and, and always looking for other opportunities to help out. Upcoming programs, just, you can see the, uh, the picture below that bulleted list is a, just the, the most recent flyer of what's available for Essex residents, those enrichment programs in the community, and those are held, we try to hold those in Essex, not at the branch, so they will be held at Centennial Grove, or in Town Hall, or at a council on aging, wherever we can find space to make it as accessible as possible for community members. But we're gonna be looking to do those fall enrichments. Uh, we're talking with the Housing Authority about meal programs, um, and also just what other enrichment programs would they like to see, how can we take the show to them? So we've partnered in other communities like Raleigh and Ipswich with their housing authorities, where we will come to them, our board will come and deliver meals, we will serve meals. You can see the pictures on the right are, are one of the barbecue events that we held and, and served at the Housing Authority. But then also understand their classes, or the things they want to do. We're, we're pretty, we understand that a lot of times folks don't have access to transportation, those kinds of things, but they need the services too, so how do we bring them to them? And then same with council on aging, we've been working with the council on aging to find out what are the gaps there, and, and how can we help fill those needs, so whether it's group exercise classes, um, again, meal delivery, whatever those, those services are. That is the majority of what I have. Thank you for listening. Questions?
I don't have too many questions, I, I will make a comment. It's nice to have these before you come in, so that I can have time to think. As far as the enrichment for adults-
Yes.
Have you, you've gotten feedback on that? I'm just trying to understand, because I know I haven't seen much in the line of advertising for it, so-
Sure.
I wasn't sure if there has been some.
Yeah, so the Ipswich, we, we've, we've been looking to figure out where a good spot for group exercise classes are. We've heard a lot of feedback on, on wanting more of the holistic exercise program, so we were, I think Carrie from our, our Health and Wellness Director was here, meeting with Brendan, looking at space here to see what we could do for classes. Trying to find the right times. Part of that survey was understanding what's the right time of day for adults.
It can't be while we're occupying the building for business, because it's too loud. But there could be a ti, a time after 4:00, maybe before 6:00, before meetings begin. And there could be, um, perhaps weekend or Friday afternoons.
Yep. Um, also looking, we get a lot of requests for like CPR first aid classes, um, the nutrition workshops, all those things that we had offered previously, those seem to come up again. Little League was very happy to have us do free CPR training for all of the coaches at the start of the season. So trying to lean in wherever we can with that. A lot of, a lot of requests for group exercise classes outdoors as well, so we're trying to figure out how we can best utilize the basketball court at Centennial Grove before it gets too cool. And then also paddle sports, people, we get a lot of requests for, for pickleball, so we're trying to understand, can we bring them to the Y? What are some right times that work for them? Or we've done some portable pop-ups in the past, where we bring the nets, we bring the paddles, and we do pop-ups on like playgrounds and that kind of stuff and advertise, so we're working to do more of that. But that's the majority of what we've heard. The only other thing I really heard back was an email from a mother, and this was an adult, this is for kids, asking about enrichments at the elementary school in addition to our after-school programming. So things like STEM and STEAM classes, like an engineering club, that type of thing. So, uh, I've reached out to Pam to find out if there is additional class space or classroom space for us to do something like that, because we have funding from donors that is specific for STEM and STEAM programming for kids. So, we, we, like in the past, we had Mass Audubon come out and do an ecology program around the pond at Essex Elementary for about eight weeks. So trying to think about what are the opportunities to do that, and understanding if there's space to do it. Yes?
Chris, you had 375 kids in the program last summer. Do you have a maximum, or do you just add more staff? And the reason I'm asking, because if you do have to go to, you know, an artificial water source for water activities, you know, you could easily max that out if you-
Yeah, absolutely. So, that's a great question. So we look at, yes, we hire more staff, we could, we could take on more kids, but we're also very conscious of carrying capacity of the property as well, right? So, um, if you get to a number that's too large, you can, yes, we can always hire more staff, but now if they're too tight, tightly packed, or to your, to your point, there's not enough access to the activities, or at least access that provides a quality experience, it doesn't make any sense. So, um, we're very conscious of watching that, and, and making sure that we understand what the carrying capacity is. 375 kids, like, at, at Dory, that was a pretty good number for that property. What's nice about it is that, um, we're able to spread them out down to the ball field, down to the cottage, so, we can get creative with the schedule if we need to. And our staff are, are pretty great about kind of pivoting when they need to, and, and ensuring that the kids are still having a good time.
Annie?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Hi, Chris.
Hi.
So, what are, what are the reasons that a person would choose to send their kid to the Manchester Parks Program over the, I mean, I remember, you know, I've seen comments on social media about-
In the summer?
Yeah, it didn't work for me. I went to the, I went to Memorial's, um, you know, the camp program in Manchester, and I just wondered, what- you know, the camp program in Manchester, and I just wondered, what is it that, and I think it might have been a half, they wanted a half-day option, that might have been it? What is the, is that the reason that folks would not, would go there instead of to Camp Dory?
Possibly, I don't, I honestly have not had a lot of conversations with families about that, I have not had a lot of families come to us. So we have those, those comments that you have, those are pulled from a software we use called Listen 360, and that surveys our members and our participants pretty regularly throughout the year. So in reviewing all of our camp surveys and feedback from everyone, there was nothing about, about wanting to go, about why they would leave or why they would go to Manchester per se, that didn't come up a lot. We also, if people rate us under a five without any comment, we call them to find out, well, what exactly happened, like why was it so bad, you know what I mean? Because we want to, yeah, well, because we want to know, right, how do we improve? So, and in those conversations, I didn't hear the Manchester piece. Now that said, if the half-day is, is what people are looking for, that's likely what it is. We offered a half-day camp on-site this summer at the Ipswich Y for families with those like five to seven-year-olds, because what we found is those were the ones that were primarily asking for that, whether it was at our Rowley property in, or our Cedar Mill property in Rowley, or here in Essex. So that was a, and that one, we had, we had one or two folks from Essex come and attend that one, it was a small one to start, I think we had 15 kids a day, but first summer out, that's not a terrible number. So we'll continue to try and grow that as the summer goes on, and they have access to the outdoor pool and splash pad and all of those things right on site there. Did not get any feedback about that being inconvenient from the few people that attended at Essex, but yeah, I don't know, I'm not sure.
And I can ask too.
Yeah, I would, if, and if you have any feedback, I'd love to hear it.
Yeah, and so the, the after-school program does still run?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so because I know that there was, somebody made a remark that we did not have access to the elementary school, and I just want to make sure we do have access to the elementary school.
Yeah, we do, yeah, Pam's been fantastic about continuing that contract, yeah.
Okay, and so you and I have talked over the years about like, you know, when we did the long-range plan, we thought, oh, could we put together, not an official committee, but an ad hoc kind of committee that would be doing programming? That never happened.
Right.
And, you know, you have always said, we are a willing partner, we're willing to work with you as much as, or as little as you want to develop, to develop programming, and I know that we got a public comment from somebody a few weeks ago that said, you know, hey, can we start a, a youth commission?
Sure.
And so I would like to inspire whoever's listening, if that person is listening, to gather some folks together and talk to us about maybe doing something like that, to work with you to develop some programming, because I think getting the numbers up has always been a challenge.
Yep.
And, but you already have kids at the school in the afternoon, so.
We do, yes. And, and again, that, that 30 child participation rate, again, you know, when I first heard that number, I was like, oh, that doesn't sound like that many kids, but in talking with Pam, she said, well, that's, that's about what, based on need and what she sees in those grades, like that's what she would expect for participation, so it made me feel a little better, that we're kind of, we're meeting the need. That said, I think enrichment programs outside of that might speak to a different population of kiddos, and maybe that's less about need and more about just desire for, for other enrichments. So yeah, happy to have an advisory council, like I'd love to be able to sit with a group regularly and, from the town and talk about like, hey, this is, this is what we, this is what we're hearing, this is how the needs are changing in the community, can we pivot and offer some of this type of program?
But do we need another advisory group, or do we say partnering with the PTO, or partnering with the school, the school already?
I, I don't disagree with you, it's just that if folks want this, they have to kind of do it.
You're saying if folks want this?
Pardon?
If folks want this.
If folks want this, yeah, then they have to do it, and we did account for it in the, in the strategic plan, and, you know, you have said numerous times, we're here really to do this kind of programming, and I think it'd be great.
Yeah, in response to your comment about advertising, just suggestions about where we should be advertising other than the library, through the select board, like just places that people see what we're doing?
Good question. So of course, I know, I am of the type to read the Council on Aging newsletter every month, and I know that also the Facebook, so if there is something, we've got a couple of Facebook pages that claim that they're Essex pages, and my feeling is, is that we also have the town clerk, so if there's something that you do feel could go out, the town clerk also has a Facebook page.
Okay.
That, you know, when I'm looking to do something official, I try and use that.
Sounds good, okay, I appreciate that.
It's impressive what you do, and I think we're very grateful.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate it. No, you, it's been a fantastic partnership, working with Brendan's been phenomenal, and all of the select board members through the years have been great, so we really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Do you want to take some licenses?
Yeah. All right, so we're going to move down to, let's move down to appointment first.
What about the MOU, do we need to do that?
We're going to go back to that. We, we also didn't do the town meeting.
Yep.
So we have an appointment for Sam Mercia. Sam is relatively new to town, he is looking to be on the Conservation Commission. We all, we got the letter and we read through it, very impressive to me. I will say at first, I was a little skeptic about somebody who's only been here since this summer, however, after reading all of his information, I was very impressed with his, his information.
He wants to volunteer.
And he wants to volunteer. Okay, so I, do I have to take a motion to accept this appointment? Yes.
Yes.
Going to make, make a motion to accept Sam Mercia for the Conservation Commission for a three-year term ending on 6/30/28.
Second, can we have some discussion?
Sure.
Did we check with the Concom as, did, did you run this?
They, they spoke with him and, and they recommended that he put forward for your consideration.
Yeah, I, I didn't mention that because it was Deb that forwarded him to us, so I felt like that he must have been talked to. Okay, so now we'll move into.
One favor, did you want to?
Oh, all those in favor? Aye.
Thanks.
Asking questions. Okay, so now we have licenses, we'll move to that. So we have one-day wine and malt license, we have the Essex Historical Society and Shipbuilding Museum, and we've got a couple, so let me just read through them, we have October 10th from 5:00 to 8:00, and we have, and this will be the outdoors at 66 Main Street, and then we have October 11th from 5:00 to 8:00. We additionally have, well, let's do the malt looker first.
Second?
All those in favor? Aye. I did want to ask, Tasha, do you mind if I ask you a question? I just want to, I'm just trying to get understanding, you've been in a lot with these events, and I just, are you continuing like right through this end of the year, you'll be doing them? I'm just trying to get an idea of.
So I apply for licenses twice a year, in the spring for all my spring and summer events, and in the fall for all my, so I'm not here every meeting.
Okay.
So this one didn't get on the last meeting agenda because it just came up as an opportunity to do a fundraising event with Sandpiper at the museum for those two days.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yep.
And then, next we have, oops, the entertainment license, this is for Essex Historical Society and Shipbuilding Museum, again, for the same two dates, October 10th and October 11th. These are both going to be with small Bluetooth, and that's why basically I asked the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
So, do we want to go to the fall town meeting?
Sure.
Thank you.
So I did have, I did revise the.
Do you think we should kind of stick super out for the next article?
For?
For the shipbuilding.
Oh, that's, I don't know if that's.
Yeah.
I already talked to Katie and said that no, this, it's too late last minute, and I, there's a lot to read on that document, so I'm going to give you this. So I did talk to Katie, I did say that it would be, we'll have it put on the spring.
So the fall town meeting warrant, I revised it in accordance with the board's guidance from the last meeting, and I also had it reviewed by town council. The first nine articles are still not finalized, there will be a public hearing next, next week on the 15th, planning board will be presenting to people at the public hearing, anyone who wants to come, their nine zoning proposals. Now I'm just going to go through things that may have changed a little since you last saw this, and of course, your, your final opportunity to review and approve will be at your next meeting. But on page one, I, I've added in ore other rolling equipment in the police cruiser detail revolving fund proposal, and that's because the chief of police said that he sometimes gets requests for the portable light tower, which is a trailer, and he'd love to be able to charge a fee for it and capture that in the fund. The next thing I want to highlight comes as Article 12, and when town council reviewed this article, which has to do with how the finance committee should be nominated and appointed, he added in some procedural things that he felt were necessary in order to have this discharge well. So I've got a paragraph there, and then there's, there's another sentence at the end saying, notwithstanding the foregoing, the board of selectmen may fill the vacancy if it occurs within 60 days prior to any of the annual town meeting, or within 30 days prior to any special town meeting. Just as a, a way to get somebody on there if there, if there isn't agreement at the committee level. So those were some suggestions, I don't know if you had any comment on how he worked in this other wording?
I didn't. I did want to just mention, the next one, Annie, because you haven't been on for a meeting, a town meeting before, the next one will have our names associated to it, who's going to read them? He'll send it to us for each article.
The motions, so after, it won't be the next one though, you're going to sign the warrant at your next meeting, and then I'll do the motions. Two meetings from now.
And just because the first time I got it, I was like, why is my name on here?
Oh, you're saying it's going to be in the text?
It's going to be in the.
Fine.
Not for the public, for us, yeah. I didn't have anything additional, did either of you?
And likewise on Article 13, this is the one about offering at least the finance committee meetings remotely. You can see that he added in some language that parrots back what is in some of the state law, and so he's just using that language. Any questions on that?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Then on page five, Article 19.
Can we talk about the Article 14 and the dollar per foot?
Yes.
You know, this is very foreign to me, I don't own a boat, don't anything about them. Is, is this reasonable? Is this like, if we haven't done it in so many years, is it?
Well, this was actually left open the last time you talked about it, and the chief was going to get back to me, and he did, and he came up with the $8 figure.
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean you couldn't get back to him with, with a different proposal.
I, I don't have the expertise to know, I mean, if I was a voter, I'd say zero, and that's not really good for the town, so.
I think, you know, I mean, going up, what, what is that, like 20%? I think that's.
But after how many years?
Oh, decades.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't matter, you want to send it to from 6 to 60 per foot? I mean, no, you want to gradually go up, so this, I think is just a starting point that it will continue to increase, you know?
So can we decide, or can we say it would be a good idea for us to revisit this every two years? Like just get into a rhythm of it?
That would be, wouldn't that be with the harbor master, would make the recommendation? Because it depends on what's happening in the industry, you know?
Sure, I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, to wait decades to do something like this when, you know, we are having additional people working for the harbor master department, I just think it's.
Yeah, and I can put, I can put that in so that it will be revisited.
Every couple of years.
Right.
Every two years is a good, even if you don't raise it every two, but just revisit it, okay. Thank you.
And that Article 19 that I was mentioning.
Sorry.
No, that's.
Or you were interrupted.
No, no, no. This is for a new motor for the shellfish department boat. When you last met, you didn't even know about this need because the motor died in between meetings. We looked at the possibility of getting a new trailer boat and motor, but it's not necessary right now. The existing boat works well enough, the shellfish constable is more than willing to operate that boat, and if you ever did have to upgrade the boat, then you could put this new motor on it.
What, what's he doing now? He has no motor?
He has no, he has no boat ability right now, right. You know, he, he can go out and walk out to some places, he can also drive to some vantage points. So is everybody okay with that?
Yep. And it would, so if this gets done in the fall, does, I'm assuming he goes downriver in the wintertime?
When it's, when there's the ability to do so, yeah.
Because I, I know that a lot of times in the wintertime, they do a lot of Kenomo, they don't even use their boat, they walk. I just didn't know if they, you know, well, actually, I have seen some go out in the middle of the winter.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah. All right.
Article 20.
Shorts.
Article 22, Community Preservation Act, we've heard from the committee, that they have three goals, one of them is $25,000 for the town pier, replacing the rotted wooden structure with a concrete slab, $957 to fund an overspent account for a project that got completed, but it should not have been allowed, that $957 should not have been, should have not been authorized. So that's a housekeeping thing. Then there were four projects total, three of them with small amounts of money that are completed and need to be closed out, so town meeting can do that. And then the tennis court materials appropriation that already exists for the 4999, the Community Preservation Committee would like to bring that back, so that if there's ever funding needed in the future, it could just be bundled with new funding. And I did put together a handout that would be handed out at town meeting for, to explain, just like we do at, at the annual town meeting. On the, on Article 23, which has.
Can I just ask a question about 22? So the number four, tennis court materials for 499, you rescind, they want us to rescind that?
Yes.
Okay. Can, in the future, can we put where, I thought that there was, you know, the tennis court was at wherever she's going, wherever they were for, I think they were for behind Town Hall.
Or Memorial Park, no.
Yeah, so can we just make sure that we.
I can, I mean, this is, this handout can be, can be, this is not even going to be handed out until the night of town meeting, I can just add it.
Okay, I just want to be clear about where that is.
I can just add that.
Yeah, thank you. And the other thing about the town pier.
Mm-hmm.
Is that clear to people, what that, what that is?
I think it'll be explained.
Yeah, it's the fir, it's the stationary part of going from the actual ground to the gangway.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's a stationary piece. We're not talking about a new gangway, we're not talking about new floats or new docks.
It's just that.
It's that stationary piece.
Yeah.
Which is rotten, and in rather installing, we got seven thousand dollar, seventy-five-hundred dollar railings to install, but it's so rotten, it doesn't make any sense. So they would cast in the ability to attach those railings to this new slab, and we just won't deploy the railings until next season. Article twenty-three, at this point, the Finance Committee is recommending only a few accounts get money this year. Hundred thousand dollars to vehicles, because we seem to have a need, a continuing need for vehicles. Twenty thousand dollars to the Town Hall and Library Fund, and twenty thousand to climate change, and the usual three thousand dollar contribution to streetlights. So it comes to a hundred and forty-three thousand. That's the recommendation right now.
I had, um, someone reach out to me about the rotation of the police vehicles, and I wondered if we had anywhere, just a listing of what they all are with the date, the dates, because he was saying, you have these two old vehicles, and I was like, yeah, I didn't know the specifics about the dates and the mileage and stuff, but I think we do have it memorialized somewhere, if I could share that with him.
Yep, I will, I will get that from the chief. I think it's also useful to go through Article twenty-eight, some of the things that will be in the motion. So the harbor master wages for the civilian side, thirteen-three, fifty-two-hundred for the law enforcement side, and some fuel. Police vehicle maintenance and dues and memberships, that's the police department separately from the harbor. DPW superintendent's salary, some actual additional money to match what we, what the wage and salary scale might get increased to. The ClearGov software, which fortunately, we're able to use even before we have to pay for it, and it's all at their risk. And then we've noted a couple of retirements, and there'll be payouts associated with that.
So they're being bought out of their sick vacation time?
Yeah, so when, when someone retires, or even if, when someone just leaves us and not, not retract, retiring, any unused vacation time, they get paid a hundred percent, because that's a property rate.
Right.
When you leave without retiring, you get no access to your sick time, but if you retire, you get a hundred percent of your vacation time, and depending on what group you're in, a percentage of your accrued sick time.
What is the policy on notifying the town of your retirement? What is the expected lead time? You know, like, usually, someone in, like, a superintendent gives you at least a year so you can, you know what to do, but what is the.
Since, it depends, so if there's, if it's somebody that has an employment contract, it'll be spelled out in the contract.
Yeah.
But if it's somebody that doesn't, like the superintendent of Public Works, there is no standard, there's no.
They have no contract?
No. Managers only have contracts for the positions that are statutorily authorized to have a contract. That's gonna be the town administrator, the police chief, full-time fire chief if we had one.
Yeah.
The town accountant, the treasurer collector.
But there was, isn't it, is it, you have to give at least a sixty-day notice in order for the Essex County Retirement Board?
Yeah, but you don't necessarily have to, there's nothing that says when you give your notice to the town, because there's no employment contract, and if, you know, it could be as, as little as the customary two weeks.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm, I mean, I'm just like, thirty-one thousand is, is not a little amount, that's something to plan for, so.
And it's hard to plan for, because that, that happens to be two, right?
That's two people.
That's two people.
So, I know that at work, we have a certain, you know, you're not allowed to have X, over so many hours of sick time, you don't accrue anymore.
We have the same thing.
We do.
It's limited at twelve hundred hours, because that is what forms the short-term disability for the, for the employee. And so if you continue to accrue it and you use it judiciously, if something happens where you're gonna have a longer-term situation, then it's there for you. Which is one of the reasons we've never really looked into some of these supplemental benefits, like short-term disability, because it already exists, and it exists for every group. Every employee can accrue up to twelve hundred hours.
Okay.
And, and again, they do not get a sick time payout if they separate without retiring. It's only for those people who retire from here.
What is the percentage, like ten, twenty percent?
It's twenty percent, twenty-five, and thirty, depending on the situation.
Okay, sorry.
That's all the comments I had to highlight, I don't know if you have any other questions on it. You can expect that this will come back to you minus the notes at the next meeting, but I will be, I will have added in the final planning board ver, the versions of the planning board proposals, which, after they have their public hearing, will be clarified, they'll go through Town Council, and they'll, they'll be put in front of you on the twentieth.
Two things. So in terms of where money comes from to fund things, that's kind of live until the night of Town Meeting?
Till the night of, yeah, and it usually has a lot of input, of course, from the Finance Committee, and so what you see on the draft monetary summary is where they've landed so far.
Yeah.
If there are changes, I'm sure that will be notified.
Okay, and then the second thing is, I wonder, and I, if you could just give us an idea, folks who are watching, who are interested, the planning board hearing, what is, you know, how do you prepare if you wanna come and comment on something, like, how do they structure that meeting?
Well, they, generally, they go through each one of the proposals, and they give people a chance to comment on specific proposals. If you want, I can go through the topics, no?
I don't need that.
Okay.
I just wanna know what, you know, do you go, they go one by one for each, and then take?
Yes.
They did that last time.
Anything else on it?
No, thank you for this.
So there's the MOU for Regional Sheltering, spoke with the chair earlier, she would like to go another meeting cycle on that, just to give you the ability to review it or ask questions.
I haven't reviewed it. He reminded us that it was in our previous, however, it was back in June, and it was a hundred and nineteen-page document, and no, I didn't go through it.
Yeah.
With a fine-tooth comb to find out that this attachment B existed. So I would like to look through it. Brendan is telling me that it, although this dollar amount's listed here, we, it's not.
If you ever got to a point where the emergency was so dire that you didn't have an in, in-town solution, either a temporary shelter at the school, maybe day center at the, at the senior center, or getting people to go out of town with relatives or in-town with relatives, if we need that option, we want to be part of the regional shelter. And if you don't get on the bus now, you're not gonna be part of it.
Yeah.
And what it says in the agreement, and you can read it to, before the next meeting as well, review it, it says that they're gonna take stock of the total number of people that participate in the shelter, that they're going to take the total costs. They're gonna divide that cost by the number of people to get a per-person cost, and if there are only five people from Essex, we will be billed five times the individual rate. If there's forty people from Gloucester, well, then they're gonna pay more. It's not that we're gonna pay an exact rate, right, the same as everyone else.
Am I reading this that we are paying Manchester, so it's not like we're paying the, the Essex County community?
Right, so what's happening is, they've agreed to come, to serve as the fiduciary for the thing.
Oh, for everybody?
Right, and then.
For the five thousand initial.
And then if there are other costs, they keep paying it, but on a reimbursable basement basis from the towns, which is a pretty good model. I mean, first of all, they've, they've agreed to actually run the thing.
Mm-hmm.
And take responsibility for making the finances work. And if there's a disaster of that scale, we have the ability to overspend, overspend the town budget. There's only a couple of times you can do that. Snow and ice that goes over the budget, if there's a bona fide emergency or disaster, and if there's a legal settlement. Otherwise, it has to be in a budget. But my point is, if we had people that had to participate, and then we got a bill for it, there's actually a way to do it. You overspend the budget to do it.
So, I, I just have a couple of concerns about it, so I would like to read it further. I don't like an idea similar to you of the five years that's holding us into something when we don't even know. The other thing is, have we ever had to use this before?
No, we've never, ever since I've been with the town, which is nineteen ninety-seven, we've never participated in a regional shelter, because we haven't needed to. That doesn't mean that the day won't come.
I understand, it's an insurance, I get that, I just am a little bit.
And there's no, there's no cost to participate unless and until you actually have people that had to go to the shelter.
And then you have to pay for them.
All right, I do wanna just read it.
That's right, sure.
Can I just ask a question about the seed money? The, the initial five thousand that Manchester said that they would, they would fund?
Yep.
So are they saying that they're going to fund the five thousand dollars every year, or is it just a one-time?
They'll have it always available, so if there's ever a need to stand up the shelter, there's someone with money, yeah, so the, I, how they're gonna keep, they say they're gonna get it from their free cash.
Yeah.
So they have to go through their own system to do that. And, okay, we're gonna do a shelter, all right, well, start rolling the pallets of water. Well, someone's gotta buy that, someone has to pay for that, someone has to order that. That's what that's all about.
Yeah, and it, just looking at the different elements that have to be accounted for, are there vendors out there that are able to, I mean, I know this disaster happened on the part of the country and.
Yeah, they would seek to have agreements in place.
Okay.
That's normally how it's done, and we're planning with the KPN Emergency Planning Committee, Regional Planning Committee, we're hopefully gonna get some grants to do first a tabletop on standing up the shelter, then we're gonna actually do an onsite exercise that's gonna be more of a walkthrough.
Is there like a?
It, it could be from that one. And then eventually, there'll be a full-scale exercise.
Okay.
With, with simulated participants, et cetera, down the road. And it's never been this organized. The last time a regional shelter was discussed, it was gonna be at the O'Malley School, but it never got off the ground.
So is that, are these exercises to try to determine how much it'll be used?
No, if, so there'll be a scenario that gets put together, and this many people had to come.
Yeah, that's what I mean, they'll wanna know.
They'll wanna know, well, it's, it's to, it's to gain familiarity with exactly what the facility can do, how it's gonna work.
What you'll do?
Right.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. And that's all gonna be through grants, so again, it comes down to, if you need the shelter, you gotta pay. But by then, it's a solution for whoever needs to go there.
Right.
Okay. I'm going to ask for any public comment. Go up to the mic.
Good evening, Mike Stroman, Maple Street. This goes to Brendan's earlier updates, thanks for that, Brendan, on Western Sampson, the Memorial Park tennis court issue. I was a little, it still seems to be quite unclear, again, the issue of, is this a public or private project? And I'm just wondering if you could clarify that for me, and the thought occurs to me, who is gonna be the applicant on the notice of intent that the Western Sampson files with Conservation Commission?
I can answer the first one. That is definitely gonna be the town, because they're under contract with the town to do design and permitting.
Okay. So would that extend to them, the town being the responsible party for the project?
It doesn't necessarily have to follow one from the other. In fact, if the town is the applicant and gets the permit, and then there's some change to say that it's actually someone else, there's, there'd be a mechanism by which that project could be transferred to that entity.
Well, yeah, and I think it creates some conflicts there in that sort of a bifurcated process in which a client or quote-client, wherever's gonna advocate for this before the commission and the town, they haven't had an opportunity to coordinate with the Western Sampson, per your request. You're the point of contact for the whole town and for anybody interested in the project. So it seems to me that, you know, the client here hasn't had an opportunity to speak with the consultant, if, if you consider a, a quote-private.
The town is the client for this design and permitting. The town is the client. Whether that will remain so, again, I can't answer that question, you have to talk to the board about that.
Okay, but there, there certainly, there's an advocacy group supporting this tennis court, and it seems to be we've been hamstrung in terms of coordinating with Western Sampson, because all communications have been going through you. And to that point, I'm just wondering if, if as part of the presentation to the Conservation Commission, notice of intent will require an alternatives analysis, and to what extent you, as the town rep, have requested a robust alternatives analysis, and again, thinking basically.
I'm not, I'm not aware that it will be required, I've been speaking with Western and Sampson, and they did not indicate that an alternatives analysis is required as part of this permit.
Well, that's typically required in filing notice of intent when you're proposing the impact well and areas.
Well, that's why we hired them, and they said they have it well in hand, and they intend to, you know, if that's part of what they've done, they'll roll it out, but I don't, I'm not aware of any additional sites or anything like that, if that's what you're.
Well, it seems to me it would behoove the, you as a town rep to ask them whether they have an alternative, if they're gonna present it.
Oh, I certainly will, but they, you know, they've told me that they have it all well in hand, and when they apply on the fifteenth, and they show up on the twenty-eighth, they have a game plan, they know, they have told us as the expert, they know exactly what they need to have in order to get that permit successfully. But I'll ask them about it.
Okay, no, yeah, I appreciate that, and I mean, to the point of, the reason they have alternative considerations in notice of intent is to minimize impacts to well and resources. Now, although I haven't seen what's been submitted to you, from what I understand in the discussions this evening, they presented the maximum build-out or model perfect situation, which means the greatest impacts to the area. So the commission and their duties would typically ask, well, what have you done to minimize those impacts? And in this case, obviously, the minimization, minimization of those impacts would result in less cost, which is, goes ultimately to.
We don't, we don't know that. I mean, they have to move a road, and they're gonna take the paving off the road and, and have a gravel road, that actually is better than what it is right now, so they're gonna bring that up to the Conservation Commission. They're gonna show that in between the courts, there's gonna be the pervious pavers. And I don't know that the footprint would be any different, depending on what is chosen.
So I'm just gonna ask, it's, it's ask a question, not question and answer. If you have questions that you'd like to put in writing and send it to Brendan and to the board, I'd love to see them, so that before the twenty-eighth, we have it in hand.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, we'll try to formulate some thoughts.
And I'm gonna send you the documents that the board reviewed tonight.
Okay.
And I'm happy to take whatever input you have and bring it to Western and Sampson and, and be the go-between.
Okay, okay. And as far as their, their preliminary information, they'll be sent to the commission on the fifteenth.
That's the filing deadline, that's right.
Is that gonna be publicly available at that point? That'll be.
I'm gonna give it to you tomorrow. Oh, you mean the NOI itself?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, upon filing. I don't even have that yet, so.
Okay, okay, great. Well, thanks for that feedback, and I'll look forward to getting the material tomorrow.
Sure.
We'll be back in touch with everybody. Thanks.
Thank you. Nina?
Hi, Nina McKinnon, Lowland Farm Road, one Lowland Farm Road. I won't ask about the tennis courts, I'll follow up via email, because I still do think there's a lot of questions on a private project. But I am here tonight, and I'm speaking to you as a member of the community, not as a FinCon member, because I'm here to bring up the items specific to the Essex Elementary School building project. I'm really wanting and hoping that the Board of Selectmen have the same unanimous drive and enthusiasm that was given when Manchester Memorial had their opportunity to build or renovate a new school. As someone who all of you know asks questions and wants to learn information rather than be told it, I wanna take the opportunity to explain why I did the post on Facebook last Thursday morning, October second, regarding the October eighth community, number one community meeting for the Essex Elementary School building meeting. The post was created using public information from the MERSD Essex School building pages. My. My goal for creating the post was simply to create interest in the Essex Elementary School project. There has been much less attention to this, and I would think the enthusiasm for us having this opportunity would be much, just much bigger. The October eighth community meeting is the first formal opportunity for the community to have dialogue with the Essex Elementary School Building Committee, to ask questions, to have dialogue, to provide input. It's important for the community to be heard, and October eighth is the first of three meetings in a very short period of time, and I want, I want the meeting and the Essex Elementary School building to get the attention it deserves. Posting to the Essex Notices and Issues Facebook page seemed like the natural spot to place a factual piece of public information. And while we all know this is not an official town page, it's important for the Board of Selectmen and the community to know it's a highly moderated page, even when information is correct. Based on my post at 12:25 PM on Thursday the second, Selectman Cameron texted me, asking me to pull the post. I work for a California-based company, so from 11:00 AM Eastern Time to 3:00 PM Eastern Time, I'm usually at my busiest with conference calls and so forth. I hope the Board of Selectmen and the community will understand my surprise by the next text received from Selectman Cameron stating, quote, "I've removed it from the Essex page that was sent to me at 1:38 PM." Selectman Cameron posted on April 28th, prior to the Mount, Maytown meeting votes, that she would be stepping back from moderating this page. Clearly, this isn't the case. I find it concerning, and I think the Board of Selectmen and the community needs to know. Why am I bringing this up? Because I'm concerned about how communication might be controlled specific to the Essex Elementary School build. It is, again, to ask the Board of Selectmen to have the unanimous enthusiasm to support this project. Essex has waited over twenty years for a new or renovated K through five building. As someone who has been asking, quite vocal at times, if a K through five building makes sense, is there something creative that could be done, a smaller project? I want to be 100% clear that a K through five building is the only option that makes sense. And these are the reasons why. Because any reconfiguration adds to building in Manchester. Sending Essex students to Manchester isn't simply putting students on a bus. Sending students to Manchester means more building by Essex in Manchester. This is Essex's turn within the district agreement. It's time for Essex to have a building for our community. Additionally, and the reason why even I was asking the question at times, there, one might think there could be cost savings. There isn't the cost savings one might expect. Superintendent Bowden, last week and at previous meetings, including even during the memorial project, has stated multiple times, quote, "There really isn't cost savings found because staff effectively stays the same and transportation costs will jump considerably." One needs to attend these meetings, review minutes and so forth to learn these statements. A K through five allows for future growth and future opportunities as Essex develops. The Essex Park Road development of thirty-six houses was not included in the enrollment figures because the OSRD was yet to be approved. A K through five building will provide Essex and the district with options for generations to come. And lastly, I just want to let all to know, the timelines for the Essex Elementary School project are tracking, quote, "almost to the month day," unquote, of the memorial project. It has been mentioned at multiple meetings with some humor that changed the year, quote, unquote, and the same slide could practically be used. This means there's the potential for town votes to be made November of 2026. This is exciting. This should be exciting. Let the community hear the enthusiasm from the Board of Selectmen for the Essex School Building project. I know there's work to be done. A lot of decisions are going to be made in the coming weeks. I hope the Board of Selectmen are unified in Essex staying within the timelines that work for Essex as we go forward to this final piece of the regional agreement being fulfilled. I appreciate everyone's time.
Hi, Jody Harris, 21 R. Spring Street. This isn't really a, a public comment, this is more an observation, when we're talking about the engine for the Shellfish Constable's boat. So I was sitting, looking at the monetary summary with the, whatever, forty-three hundred dollars, and it, thinking about Billy not having a boat, or any of them not having a boat available now, and I'm wondering if it wouldn't be more prudent to do a FinCom reserve transfer and replenish the FinCom reserve at town meeting? And that way, we wouldn't waste seven or eight weeks.
There is an article for that, which we thought maybe wasn't going to be used. But you certainly could use the reserve fund, because it is certainly an unexpected event.
I'm just thinking, you know, we'd save seven weeks, get him back on the water, and we're meeting in the morning, so if you wanted to put that in, we could do that tomorrow and get him underway, because...
If the Finance Committee does that, I'll just bring the warrant to the Selectmen devoid of that article. Does that make sense?
That makes sense. But you'd need to put in for a line, for a FinCom reserve transfer?
We'll do that right in the morning.
Okay.
Yep.
Does that make sense?
I have a question about it. So you don't have to go to, when you ask for the transfer at town meeting, do you have to say it's to replenish this?
We would say we, so it would be under the special funds?
Yeah.
Where we'd slide back in and replenish the FinCom reserve account with the amount of money that we transferred? So we always true that up at the town meetings?
That sounds logical.
Okay. Back to business?
Uh huh.
All right, moving on to other business. Entertaining a motion to approve the weekly warrant in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-one-hundred, no, two-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirteen-and-eighty-four cents.
Move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approve the minutes for the Selectmen, Selectmen's meeting, the 22nd of September, 2025. It was the open meeting?
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At this next one, Brendan, am I entertaining a motion?
This would be after your executive session?
After, okay.
That I expect to have, and which will be very brief.
Okay, so moving on. Review of the letter, the Manchester Essex Regional School District Superintendent received from the, the director, sorry, the Director of the Campaign and Political Finance Concerning Allegations, sorry, allegations of the public funds to influence the May 12th, 2025 town election ballot question. So I, we've had the letter printed, I honestly had to get Brendan to read it and sit down with counsel, because I couldn't tell whether or not this was a violation, not a violation. So it is deemed a violation, and it is also pushing back, as far as I'm concerned, which I'm very sad that the state does this and doesn't just take care of it, pushing it back to the town to do a, to go back after the funds from the individual, which is the superintendent. And the, what was deemed as the financial aspect of it, which I don't understand how they got that financial aspect, because it seems a little low to me, was around three-hundred dollars, and Brendan and I have discussed whether or not, do we want to get town clerk involved in doing this? I don't think so.
Last morning.
Yeah, and I, I really do feel that this is a violation. The Board of Selectmen and the, sorry, the school committee and the town, the school administration should know that this, we're not happy with this, we weren't happy with it when it happened. I also had gotten a recommendation from somebody that another school system that this happened at, which I think was Bridgewater, they made them go and take a class for the, for campaigns for polit, Office of Campaign and Political Finance. I don't even know anything about that class, how it's offered, who, who would go through it. But I do feel strongly that, and one of the parts that I feel strongly about is the fact that for seven years while I was on the committee with Pam, we talked about doing some of these things, and we were told no. So that really bothers me.
Saying that they...
Years later, they did it.
They knew.
So they knew. I don't know...
I don't think we should cast judgment on what they knew and didn't know. I don't think that's our role, so I would be mindful of that. I would.
I understand that, but I also sat in rooms while we talked about things.
Yep.
So Brendan, is there things that we can do? Do I, I, I don't know, I just feel like we just can't brush it under the rug, it needs to be made sure that this never happens again.
So the school committee has not even met to discuss this. I think we wait and see what the school committee does to address it, and then maybe you guys talk about it in your collaboration meeting. I mean, what are you going to do?
Expose it.
I, my, my main goal of this right now, Annie, is to get it to the public, so the public understands this did happen. We, many screamed about it at the time that it was happened. We can't change the vote, the vote is the vote.
Mm-hmm. And the town benefited by fifty-nine percent, or forty-nine percent of those dollars? They did.
Anyways, if you wouldn't mind finding out if Bridgewater did what they did and what they required them to do?
Bridgewater is a city, though, right? So Bridgewater would have your jurisdiction over the superintendent, right?
If, yeah, if it's not a regional district, that's a good point, because the superintendent is not supervised by the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen cannot direct the superintendent to do anything.
Could you ask the members of the school, the school committee to come to the next meeting to talk about it? Then you could have a dialogue about what happened, what...
I mean, you're going to have someone here, anyway, for the department head's point, I could, I could let them know in advance that it's...
The next meeting?
It, it is.
To do what? To explain?
Just talk, you know, yeah.
I could say that, could you introduce it as a topic in your discussion, if you'd like me to?
Yeah, and I think, I will communicate to some folks that the Board of Selectmen feels strongly about this, that they are not happy, and they want to know what the next steps are.
Thank you.
Sure.
Dr. Wilwell, this hasn't been signed.
One thing that is noted in that letter is that I think that they, they said that they would be helping the next time, they would, they would run a review of anything that's going to be going out in the future, which I think is a positive.
The school committee?
No.
The school district would throw, if they were, they would run anything that's about this sort of thing by this organization.
Okay, so the next thing is, is there any items that we could not use, if we...
I, I have none.
What about the personnel, the treasurer?
That's next.
Yeah.
And so now we have the review of, an approval of the position for the treasurer and collector. I did not see any changes, I don't, but I know that you had said that...
So they modernized the position description with the help of DOT, who's retiring, the position is the treasurer collector's clerk, and with the knowledge that our treasurer collector, Brooke Friedrich, has, there were a number of things on the old job description that were antiquated, and this, they really feel like they've got everything down now in a modern sense. So the procedure is, since it's a union position, you first need to get the union to agree that the position description will change to what you see in front of you. They've, they've done that, and so now it's back to the Personnel Board to determine whether you'd like to accept it. I would recommend it, because Brooke would like to put this vacancy out to, vacancy announcement out right away.
So the union has seen, has agreed?
And agreed to it.
Yeah.
If that's the case, any questions?
No.
I'm going to entertain a motion to accept the revised description of the treasurer collector's clerk position that the union has already agreed to.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I just have a couple of reminders. So we have the FinCom meeting tomorrow, 7 October, 7 AM. I've got that in my calendar. We've got the Manchester Essex Regional School Building Committee, which is on October 8th at 6:00 PM. I did want to just mention, Brendan, thank you for putting it on the, the board, but tours start at 4:30, if anybody is interested in doing a tour. And then we've got the October 15th, we've got a planning board meeting, and this is a public hearing at 7:00 PM on the 15th of October. And then the next regular school, no, we're not school, Select Board meeting is Monday, October 20th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. I'm going to now recommend that the board move into executive session for contract negotiations with AFSMI for a successor collective bargaining agreement, that the chairman declared that an open discussion of this matter would be detrimental to the town's bargaining position, and that the board will be returning to regular session to conclude regular business after the conclusion of the executive session.
That's neat.
Only, will only be brief, because you'll be perhaps dealing with that last regular business item, which is to approve the collective bargaining agreement, but that has to be done in regular session.
Yeah. All right, so we're going to go downstairs. Fade to black, what did he do?